Is this slide presentation available that can be downloaded, I guess, pretty well?
Absolutely. I can leave, in fact, if you've got a way to take it off this flash drive I've got, you can take it right now.
Do you want the presentation, or do you want just the documents? Because he's going to do PDFs of everything and send it to us.
Oh, okay, that'll be fine. I'll just talk to somebody else.
If anybody wants it as a PowerPoint, ask me now, because it's too big to email. But I can turn it into PDF and email. Otherwise, glad to do it. Okay. Well, thank you all, and thank you all for being so patient with us.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. And I don't know how much you guys heard, I just don't know. I should have said this earlier, but obviously we have some interest in our village. A solar generating facility is why we're going into this. We spent months researching this and realized we're not the experts. So we really appreciate you guys coming down. I think Deb reached out to you guys and brought you in. So thank you very much, because otherwise it would be just a lot of Googling.
And if we have additional questions, may we reach out if we can?
Absolutely. That's what we're here for. You guys pay state taxes, so that's how I get paid, so I'm all about that. Like I said, just something in the header, in all caps, let me know to you, because I get a lot of email.
Thank you very much again.
Absolutely, I'm a great.
Rob, say.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'd spend the night, but somebody's got to get the kids off.
Steve, can you ask for a couple? I wrote, I don't know.
Questions?
Yeah, I don't know what this is. How much land does it require to purchase?
And if you're off from the land, I think there's a little bit of privacy about that. Can I say this to you, that it'll get to everybody? And I'll give you all those extra fact sheets for the neighbors and the guy who's in Florida.
All right, so I think the goal seeming was to have the presentation and thank you again for coming. Next, I think for us to do is review the ordinance that Shirley drafted for us based on our last planning board meeting. And hopefully either send it as is, or with markups to accounting. That was our goal we set last month with this meeting. So that being said, let's open our discussion on what we've heard and what we think of our draft. Shirley, I think we've all looked at your draft here.
Well, he mentioned Item 4B as something that we shouldn't do. No more than 60% of the water shall be used for essential services. Can you say that to me? Not put limitations on things like that.
It's perfect. Mr. Davis, please. This is Jeremy. I hate to do this, but I really have to go. I'm jet lagged, just killing me, and I'm just about to pass out. No problem. Excuse me. Thank you for coming. All right, so most of the move.
Can I just make a point that unless you excuse Chuck, then he automatically votes yes and everything. So do you want to?
I did excuse him. Oh, yeah. I think her excuse.
No, you have to have a motion.
Oh, we have to have a motion? All right, I make a motion, we excuse Chuck from the meeting.
I agree.
All right, you say it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. All right, much better? We need a motion, right? Put the text together and then make a motion.
Let's go ahead and remove 4B.
I think it sounds good. Shirley, do we remind us we're all behind 4B on here?
Well, numbers A through F are actually out of the ordinance and are applicable to essential services 1, 2, and 3.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, they are in the ordinance. You didn't add those. Everything that you see is already in ordinance. For classes 2 and 3.
How do you feel about us removing 4B from solar generating facility?
Well, I just, you know, they would, like you said, you know, if your objective is to encourage it, whatever, it's, you know, you could put it, you know, take it out initially. These are conditional uses. So if you had a site where you wanted it to be in a certain area, and like you say, sometimes they pick out certain areas select, and then, so it might be in one corner, or sitting up on a hill, and then everything else is, you know, not utilized. So, you know, it was within the original ordinance. If you don't feel like it's a necessity to take it out, it's just...
You said that was class 2 and 3.
Class 2 and 3, that's the way they're judged right now.
Right, but if we're doing class 5, then we don't have to have that.
No, you don't have to have it, but my instructions were just to...
Make it the same, right?
Oh, okay.
My thought is probably in there, because like I say, for instance, substation, right? That's going to have some equipment on there. Not have that entire half acre lot, whatever, all equipment. Take 60% of that. To me, that kind of makes sense from like a substation point of view for a class, for the classes it pertains to.
Well, it is a new, it is a new class, so I guess you could do it. The idea was to sort of create it, and then, you know, as you know, it's a lot easier to take out than it is to put it in. This is what your ordinance currently says for class 2 and 3.
But you could leave it, because it's still going to be a CEP.
True, which means...
Same with, I'm sorry.
Conditional use permit. It's still going to be a conditional use permit.
But they would not be needing the ordinance for the CEP application if it was over 60%, right?
They still have to get it in there, you know, that might be able to tuck it away.
Before it recumb to us.
No, like you said, if you put the setbacks in for, you know, who knows? There may be like a school, or something that's a little bit more sensitive, then maybe, okay, well, we want the setbacks farther back on that side, and maybe not all the way around, you know, you can make some adjustments based on the situation and the site.
Yeah, property. Actually, I think the setbacks...
4B real quick.
Yeah, 4B, just an arithmetic number. We will know that for the property.
Sorry, what?
It's just, it's a percentage, the number of a percentage. So you could lower the percentage, you could eliminate the percentage, or you could leave the percentage, and still adjust it when, if you have a conditional use permit.
But you can't go below.
They can't, they can't bring this application if it's above that.
See, if they can't make 60%, then, you know, no one, unless they ask for some kind of variance or something, part of, you know, that's, usually doesn't work either.
But if you've seen those, if you've been to their solar farms, it's all panels, except for the little part of it that is the machinery that makes the...
Yeah, the transformers.
Transformers. And they're very small. So by limiting, I mean, I don't know how that maths out when you take the setbacks, but to me, this is too limiting when you're saying only 60% of your, of this. When, you know, because you're talking about related facilities, storage, structures, I mean, all these things are not going to be added to a farm. So to me, it's...
Well, you might have that, you might have that storage thing, just for the background. It's a new thing. Excluding transmission and distribution lines, but those, if they have a, the ones that I've seen, the bigger ones where they have their own little substations, they've got fences around them too. But they're separate. They sit off from the panels, and then a little bit over, they've got the little, just the generator, the big transgenerating thing sits off by itself, and it has a fence around it. They're usually not in the same fenced area.
Oh, well, the ones I saw that down here were...
Yeah, I didn't, the ones that I've seen...
And they didn't have fences around them?
Yeah.
They cut the number in half.
I'm all for eliminating it altogether.
You could cut the number in half.
No, what we're saying now is, if you have a 100 acre plot, you're going to have the CUP. If 60 acres of that is all equipment, that's fine, you can bring it to us. But if it's 61 acres worth of equipment, right, you can't even bring it to us. Or you have to ask for amendment, right? And then, it's enough no battle. It's not going to look at it. Then come in us, and we already said, all four allows 60%.
I think the setbacks are going to take care of that. I don't think we need to be...
I also said, it's, it's, you know, it's harder to add after it's been done. It's easy to remove, it's naff. So it's just, it's a number, it's a percentage on the property. So if you lower the percentage, what would be wrong with 20% or 15%? No?
If it's 20%, it's saying that all the panels, everything, can only take up 20% of the properties.
So you need to have it at like 80.
I mean, your house is probably taking up more than 20% of your property, you know what I'm saying?
So you'd have to move it up to 70 or 80 to get it.
You're on the same amount.
Like 80% or something.
But then, of course, they're going to bring it, and they're going to say, this is what we're putting in. This is the square footage of all these panels, of everything, this is the calculation. That's okay, that's...
But don't you think the setbacks are... The setbacks are going to...
Here's another thing, for the functional order, not have your setbacks, right? Say they're 100 feet, the equipment, then all the equipment's going to have to have spaces in between each of the rows, right? Because the way the sun goes, they're banked like that. So if you have 100 acres, you're going to have your setbacks, and then probably everything in the middle of that 100 acres are all panels. That's what I'm guessing. What we're saying is, we're limited that, and say, no, it can't be all panels. It's, some of that can't be. You just have to leave it undeveloped. Why would we do that? Why would we leave those spaces they can't develop? When it's within their setbacks and within their fence? I don't know.
So if you knock out B, what's the next one? If you knock, just eliminate B, what would be the next one?
What may it be? I think we still have setbacks to look at.
Well, the setbacks would be, the setbacks would be important overall. But then again, you're talking about setbacks to a residential neighborhood, a school, a commercial, a park, or would the setbacks be, Jimmy, if I had an open field, an open field in a wooded lot, and I decided to do that, right? And I have my road over there. Would you, you would still stay within the same setbacks? At minimum, you see what I mean? But then if the setbacks were next to a residential area or park, would they be greater?
You could do that on the CUP.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. So then you...
It's per se minimal, so, yeah.
Right?
I actually have more heartburn with C, when it talks about reasonably placed on property and reasonably mitigated, and that leaves a lot of discretion. That's an stray out of ordinance, but since reasonably located on property, so as to reasonably mitigate any visual impact on the body properties, that's just way too vague and arbitrary, you know, concept. I mean, I can see all the structures, all the stuff have to be located with a fenced area. And, you know, that kind of stuff, but, see, it kind of bothers me more than anything.
I mean, there's nothing they can do. It's solar panels. I mean, it's not like they can put them sideways. I mean, it is what it is.
What you're saying?
It's got these reasonably...
Reasonably reasonable.
If that's the one that's, because we promise, it's too vague, it's too arbitrary, is the kind of stuff which you in trouble. But, you know, you could say, you know, should be located on the property as to mitigate any to the greatest extent possible, but that's still a judgment call. But that's something that you could, you know, I think if you see one of these and goes through the CPE, you're going to sit there and go, well, you've got, you know, you have a residential here, but you've got all farmland over here, but you've got a church across the street. So, you know, who are you going to mitigate? They really, real kind of have to push it back a little bit to get it away from either the residential or the school, or the church, or whatever. You know, I don't know. But that's kind of, I'm thinking, attorney would tell you reasonable. Who's going to make that call?
Shirley, I think you've got some typos in here?
Could be, well...
So page 3?
Page 3, all right.
Under D5?
Is there page 3?
Uh, page 3 of the draft, yeah. I'm looking on the very bottom.
Are we into the, where we're into the zoning districts?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So D3, you have a setback of 20 feet.
Side yard setback is 20 feet.
Right, and everywhere else it's 100 feet, except for this one.
No, that's only, it's only 100 foot in the front.
So... Can you go to page 5?
I don't know, I mean, maybe it is a typo, let's see, let's see one of the other.
We talked about 100 feet in all directions.
All directions?
Right, so if you go to all the other zones, right, you see 100 feet in all the sides, there's the fronts, except for that one.
Well, it actually, it isn't. I guess I misunderstood you, because if you look on page 3...
Look on page 5?
Yeah, look on some of the other ones.
Okay, under D...
We're looking at the thing, yes, it's 100 feet. So I guess that is correct, okay.
And also on page 13? On F, you have the maximum building height, 100 feet? Be a tall building.
Yeah, we're good.
So I think, I think the hundreds and twenties, we may want to revisit this and go through and double check. So I just bring that up, because we're looking at setbacks. Right, I just wanted to confirm that, because we have it now, it's 100 feet everywhere.
So you want it 100 feet everywhere?
Well, that's what we're asking the draft for, it's not, it's 100 feet everywhere. I think now the discussion is, is that 100 feet everywhere for every district makes sense? You know, and again, 100 feet everywhere apparently includes fencing as well?
No, it was going from the... Right, so it's all for the property line back.
Right, that's, yeah, 100 feet.
Yeah, you'd have to move it back 100 feet before you put anything in.
To me, I think what makes, let me just throw this out there. What makes sense is what we saw in the presentation today. 100 feet from the property line, right, structures, right? Except for the fencing.
All right, so hit me up. So you take the property line, you go back 100 feet, and that's where you can lay your first pole for your first solar panel. And then you run the line. Within that 100 feet somewhere, they're going to put the transformer, usually in the center, right?
We said that in here somewhere.
Yes. So now, from the property line, your first pole's going to be laid 100 feet away from that property line. How far are you going to keep that fence from the property line? If it was at a school, or a residential neighborhood, with already a buffer and everything like that? So we're just taking the property line. How many feet clearance are you going to give it? Well, we already know, we already know what the state's going to tell you on the road frontage, because that's automatically 50 feet. The state's taking 50 feet for the road. For the utilities, the easements, everything, the road is taken. So you know the fence from the road frontage has got to be at least a minimum of 50 feet before the road, the fence can start. We know the equipment's going to be, the pole's going to be 100 feet past that. We all know the difference between the sides and the backs, that can be different. How many feet do you want to, because it's an 8-foot chain link fence, right? And we haven't even started yet with the screening to mask the 8-foot chain link fence.
So you're right. So as Shirley was saying now, it's 100 feet, which means that's when you start the fence. I think we should stop and say, no, I think it makes more, I think we're agreeing that it makes more sense for, like you're saying, the poles to be a minimum of 100 feet from the property line.
Okay.
So you're right. The question is, where is the fence? Is that, should we keep the fence out what a subdivision has for fencing setbacks?
Now, this is, this is different. This is an industrial sized 8-foot fence, okay? It's not a residential fence, because you're not allowed to put barbed wire up in a residential thing, okay? Because the barbed wire is going to have that point coming out.
Which I don't know if we can do that, but...
That, a residential, okay, it's a chain link fence 6 feet high with barbed wire.
With an 8 feet in the middle.
Doesn't have that barbed wire, but it's, it's still a fence that's not normal for subdivisions, right? Most fences are wooden 8 feet door gates you can look through, 4 feet aluminum or vinyl. But nobody's allowed to have barbed wire.
I gotta say, what I heard, what was very interesting to me was, it's not so much protecting the equipment, it's protecting the people from getting in.
Okay.
To me, that was, that was one of my big notes, was to me, the fence equals safety.
Yeah, here's the safety, but...
So the fence is serving two parts, to keep the people out, but it's not creating...
And livestock, and...
And, yeah, and everything else. But the fence is there for a purpose, right? You, now you want to have screening. So how much screening are then you're going to have for the property line back to cover up the panels and the fence? So you know the equipment's going to be about 100 feet. So let's just say you bring the fence back to 50 feet, because you want to have the machine or know a truck to drive around and service all this stuff, right? Then they'll need a roadway, an outer roadway, right? To get to their equipment and their needs, okay? So, we move, let's just say we put the fence at 50 feet from the property line. Now you're going to, what then you're going to do, step back from that feet 25 feet, and you're going to start your screening, right? Well, put this in perspective, a Ford F-250 pickup truck is about 25 feet bumper to bumper. When you look at your backyard, your perception is, that's really close to my property line. You understand? It's the length of a full-size pickup truck now. That's not a lot. We're just blocking bushes. Especially when you live in a residential area that has been accustomed to this, or a school, or playground, or park. It's, it's going to be a lot to have people judge.
So what do you think the fence setback should be?
Here's the thing, you got to get, you got to, you got to move, and this is like you said, arbitrary based on land. So if you take from that, your screening should be, and let's just say right now, our normal setback for a property, residential property, is 40 feet, right? 40 feet is the normal setback here. So that's where you should have a setback.
For a subdivision, like a residential.
For a subdivision, yeah, for a subdivision. But that's what you're looking for when you're building something like this, because we know it's going to be permanent, and it's going to be different than...
That's what I had said, a subdivision.
Right. So 40 feet, let's just bring it, let's bring the screening. The screening line, however it's going to be, is going to be 40 feet from the original property line.
The fence?
No, the screening. Totally got the screening.
Got you, okay.
The tree save area, if you want to have, you all know these as tree save areas.
You got to have some...
And the ridge down here is 30 feet all the way around, except next to Price Ridge, there's another 15 feet added on to it, because it was a conditional use. So basically, it's 30 feet, except when you go over to Price Mills, and then suddenly it's like 50.
I think on the sides, I think on the sides, the front, the sides and the back, you can get away with a 40-foot screen. And the front, it's going to be a little bit more. So then what, from the screening back, what would be the difference for the fence? I give you a fence 10 feet, so we're putting the fence still at 50 feet, you see what I mean?
So you're suggesting a minimum setback on the fence of 50 feet on all four sides?
Yeah.
Okay. How do you guys feel about that? Yeah, that sounds good. That's reasonable. How do you feel about that?
How much is that, when you do say the amount of land that the person's going to be able to use?
They still have to...
Zero. They still have 100-foot setbacks for the equipment. So if they have a 50-foot setback for the fence, that gives them 50 feet, right? And there's potential, 50 feet for the fence and the first equipment, which is plenty of money for a two-story front, really, a long, long road. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
How do you guys feel about that? You feel good? Yes.
Does the plan to put the buffer between the property line and the fence?
Yes.
We're giving 50 feet for that.
We're giving you 50 feet, so, but prior to the fence, wherever the fence sits, right? You're going to have to, you can't put the screen up to the fence, because they still have to make, maintain their fence, right? For whatever reason, you still have to check it. But you would like the screening to start in the 40-foot range.
If it's allowable.
If it's allowable. See, that's the whole thing of land, but I think...
And you got a road. You got, you got, how much shoulder of road do you have up here?
You don't need that much of the shoulder of the road.
How much of it?
Well, a gate or...
About 20, 30 feet. Say it was along 84, right?
No, 84 is, anything by the state road is already, you're going to have to be off the road by 50 feet, remember? We're only talking about the side and the back footage of the property, which is going to butt your neighbors, the park, the school, you see what I mean? This is a minimum. Now, that variance could change with the CUP, but you, you know, we all know that a 25-foot setback is nothing, right? And that's going to start your screening, and then you're going to have your fence, because then you've got this big gap in between the fence, and that's going to be ridiculous.
But understand, they set a back, they can't have vegetation real close, because...
No, no, like you said, if I, if my vegetation line of bushes and trees start at 10 feet, I mean, 40 feet, I got another 10 feet to play with as my, as my area for the trees to grow, because you don't want the trees to grow too close, and the bushes go too close to get dropped over them, and then you can't see somebody being by the fence. Because no one's going to, no one's going to plant trees within 5 feet of that security fence.
Right, I think we officially call it screening, right?
Screening, the screening.
So we want 50, so if I understand correctly, we're saying, and once again, 100-foot setbacks on all four sides, minimum...
For the equipment, for the pole.
Minimum of 50 feet setbacks for the fence, all the way around. And then we also want to specify screening.
The screening is how, your head show?
Yes, sir.
Okay, currently in the ordinance, and this is some of the screening and buffer for class 2s and 3s, it was proposed to add 5 to it. This, the minimum buffer width is 30 feet.
Perfect. The minimum buffer, okay, perfect. So this, this is, this is a little unusual, so we're only asking for 10 more feet?
No, we're still saying the same thing. Minimum buffer is 30 feet. Well, they have a minimum of 50 feet to put that in.
Right, right, then 15 acres plus 7, many of us talked about trees, so I don't know.
There's 50-foot setback for the fence, we're saying you need a minimum of 30 feet of screening. On all four sides.
Yeah.
50-foot setback minimum for a fence.
The security fence.
That means the fence can be within 50 yards of, well, I mean, 50 yards of the property line.
50 feet.
50 feet. And then you got 30 foot for the screening.
Minimum of 30-foot screening, correct.
I didn't give them very much, I didn't give them very much, gives them only 20 feet.
These are minimums.
Yeah, okay.
They can make it more.
Yeah, they can.
But that gives them the flexibility, was it, you know, it's not, mathematically, it's not impossible for them to do 30-foot screening, a 20-foot road, then a fence, and they got another 50 feet to their equipment. That's pretty much the bare minimum, I think, you would need it to maximize the usage of a property. I think.
Okay, but, right, wait. We'll get to your house, okay? Your backyard, you come out of your backyard, and here's your property line. We're going to give you 30 feet of screen, which is basically the size of the pickup truck, bumper to bumper. Then after that, there's going to be...
That's not like this one, there.
Right. Then we're going to give you about 20 feet, right? Which is full-size American car. That's going to be the clarity in between the screening and the security fence, whatever size you want to build, and then the security fence starts, right? After that, it's all, it's all over for everybody, because nobody really cares now what goes in the backyard, right?
We're saying 150 feet.
See, if that's where the property, that's where they start building the solar panels, okay? But for the homeowner, or the school, or the business, they're caring about the setback from their property line, and where does that fence start? Right? Isn't that what the average homeowner, property owner's going to do? Is that going to detract from our property value? Is the security fence still going to do its job? Yes, it's a security fence. Meaning that there's still room for the maintenance people to work on their side? And there's still room that nobody can monkey with the fence, meaning that there's a bush in the way, or a tree that's in the way, that nobody can see around the fence?
Well, remember, right now, I could go put a substation in, and I just have 15-foot setback, I think is what it is for a fence. I put a security fence up in your backyard, 15 feet away, and put in a substation.
Right.
So now we're saying 50 feet away for a solar field, instead of 15 feet for a substation.
Okay, but the solar field is taking up more of your visual space, right? And the substation, you can screen it a lot differently around the neighborhood, but there's a different condition where you can put a substation. There has to be a need, right? Like an edited domain need, like Duke says, it has to be here. It's just not, it's not like I can just go and sell my land and turn it into a solar farm or something. Duke is going to tell you where that substation's going. So that's a lot rarer than this, when we open up. We have no minimum on this, right? We're talking about community power stations or solar stations, right? You could get them as low as 5 to 7, 8 minutes, right? Because the goal...
A megawatt, right?
Your goal is to make that one megawatt, right?
Recurrent technology.
Recurrent technology. So now you're talking the average-sized hobby farm that we have around here, you could basically put up a solar, a solar farm, right? Not knocking it... Not knocking it, but your neighbor, you're building this area of pre-existing property in Newtown. Do you have to listen to these setbacks? No. You're gonna build what, your normal R forty, or R twenty, or whatever that rule is. Or if you, you, you still have to build off the, your neighbor's backyard or property line. So if you wanna put it in the middle of your backyard, go ahead, but it's split debate now.
But you're talking like the apples to oranges, because if you're gonna only use like one megawatt, is like the six acres, is then, okay? So, dude, you know, the landowner makes a deal with a solar company, and the solar company comes in, and they develop the land, and then that land, once it's developed, they go to the power company and say, hey, we've got X number of acres, you wanna, we're gonna work with you, you're gonna pay us to generate it. They're not gonna come in, he said, now they're doing a hundred and fifty acres, before they'll even talk to the landowners.
Correct.
So, you know, if you do, if you have, in my backyard, I wanna do six acres, and I wanna do solar panels, I'm probably using them for myself, because it's not gonna, Duke Power's not gonna pay me for that.
Right, but that falls under the resident, that falls under the residential law. What we're talking about here is a solar generating area that's going to be used strictly for commercial, for the resale of the sun's power to a homeowner, or a business.
Which is probably gonna be at least thirty to forty acres, I would think.
Well, we could get a minimum, can we make sure we got, covered these three points? Do we feel okay with this hundred fifty and thirty?
I don't think so. I mean, because it's already, that one's already in there, so.
Yeah, I, it's, it's a good starting point to work with, yes.
I think so too.
It's not unfair, it's not unfair, I know you understand this, I know it's not unfair, um, making it bigger or longer, since we got around sixty percent on it. So it, there is a benefit for a land developer, I understand, okay?
All right, did you get that okay?
No, let's go over it.
All right, uh, three points, one is the hundred-foot setback for any equipment.
That's the pole, where the farm starts.
Any equipment, which, does that, does that exclude the?
Excluding the fence.
Well, I mean, does that exclude the trans?
Nope.
Nope.
Distribution in the little substation, does that, put that in?
Not including the substation, you have, not including, not.
Wait, this is where the solar fence is started.
All right, and this is the solar equipment.
Right, so you have, you have, listen, when you look at the setbacks, I think the same definition you had for setbacks on here. Exact same definition. So we're just saying, and actually, it's exactly what you're saying, there's really no change. If you fix the tacos, it says the setbacks are hundred feet.
The hundred feet.
Right? However, let's also specify that the security fence must be a minimum of fifty feet.
Off the property line.
I guess the definition of setback, setback is off property line, right?
So, minimum of fifty feet off the setback of the property line, period.
And last, is what you had said, Shelley, the minimum of thirty-foot screening buffer.
Yeah, that's already, that's kind of already in there, thirty foot screen.
As long as, as long as the new class five, we're talking about references that, yes.
Yes, because if you insert it in the ordinance under B, and you just add along with one, it's, it is thirty feet.
Okay, good, as long as it's.
Security fence says it's a minimum to be fifty feet from the buffer, from the landscaping buffer?
No, no.
No, fifty feet from the property line. Right, at minimum.
Why do that, when the property line goes to the middle of the road?
Yeah, same thing.
What do you mean, if property line goes in the middle of the road? Oh, you're doing the rule counting the property line from the middle of the road back?
Yeah, some, some, some property goes to the.
I, I understand, all right, so from the.
All the pieces of property, it actually goes into the.
Yeah, I know, it's the road, but I was, I was, I was taking, okay, I see the, the legal point there. Where you take the road frontage where the road ends, because doesn't the state still have to bring you back fifty feet?
All our ordinances say, correct me if I'm wrong, all our orders say from the property line.
Well, no, some of them in here talk about on the front, it's generally, it'll, it'll say fifty feet from the edge of the pavement, or.
Then that's, that's what would be, that's what, that's what I was trying to say, because the, the state still can widen the road and put their easements and utilities in. So it's fifty feet from the frontage or the road end.
Yeah, and if you look on page four, and, and look at B, you have right at the bottom of the page, minimum, this is only the front yard, central services two, it talks three hundred feet, and seventy-five, it said, from the edge of the existing pavement to the fence line.
Yep, so that's, that's exactly what you should say, so for ours, I would say, you know, central services class five, one hundred feet.
From the edge of the pavement.
Well, that's the minimum setback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be correct.
And then it's fifty feet from existing pavement to the fence line, so there's two things, right?
No, it always says.
No, that's what I'm saying, for us, it'll be two things.
For you, yeah, fifty feet from edge of the pavement.
So you're changing property line to edge of pavement?
Yeah, on the front, and that's the way it is.
Front, yep.
Except fifty feet.
To fence line.
That's correct, that's what we tried to say, but.
All right. Yep. All right, and so the next thing, now that we've gone past those, is, I know what we're talking about, it's the minimum acreage.
All right, we got the height down of the.
Height of what?
Yeah, on twenty feet.
The, the height is twenty feet.
Oh.
There were four parts to cover. That's the height, right? And now, the percentage is now, it's, the, the. All right, Deb, you've done a lot of work on this. You've done a tremendous job, and a great job. I'm not a property owner, John is a property owner. I lived in a little part of my entire existence. No, no space. You think it's fair, pick it up, Jack, you think it's fair to minimize, to put a minimum on property when we're looking at this? I don't wanna put a minimum, I don't wanna put a maximum on it, saying that you can't build a solar farm greater than five hundred feet, uh, five hundred acres. That's what the market pays, right? If somebody wants to go up and buy five hundred eight, because it turned into a solar farm, okay? But what is the minimum of it? And I, I wasn't really concerned about the little municipality, power company, okay? Little electric shop, I wasn't concerned about that, because I don't see the supply and demand for it right here. That can be addressed every day, but is there a demand that everybody who has ten acres of land can turn that property into a solar generating thing?
I don't think there's a demand right now, but I do think that there will become a demand as soon as people start figuring out how much money they can make in this. And that right there is my, my whole concern with this whole thing, that when you're worried about, you know, minimum, people who wanna get into this, they're gonna get into it with as little cost as possible, so if you can get on, I mean, I mean, like, what was your reaction when it was, uh, when you said a hundred acres? Yeah, okay, well, that changes the game, because that's what they want, they want people that are gonna generate the larger amounts of power. But if you could still get something out of it with having five to seven acres or less, you know, if you're allowed to do it for, you know, five acres, all the people around here that own a lot of land, they're gonna do it.
Well, I'll play this, we do have minimum acreage to have a horse, and to have animals on your property, correct? Well, we're not talking about an HOA, we're talking about someone who has land outright, that doesn't belong to anything else, but then, we still have laws, rules, the same, if you're gonna build a barn, or have a horse, and do something, you have to have minimum acreage, that's for the health and safety of the horse, the hygiene, and everything. Is it, can you, can you, can you, within good cause, but good heart, tell somebody that you have to have at least three acres of the, just hear me out, unstructured land, land that you own. So if you, if you have an acre of, a forest of an acre, sorry, you have one acre of a forest, and the other two acres are pasture, what if you found a fish, or you cut down that acre of trees, to have three acres so you can start a solar, a solar farm?
Yeah, I don't think you should have a minimum, because the smallest that it's heard of by these folks that spoke of this, they said it's about fifteen acres, that's the smallest that they've heard.
But, we're, we're talking about two or three things, I'm not talking about the person who has a recreational residential generator, solar generator plant on that property, like a bio, biomass furnace, okay? We're talking about somebody who's going into a commercial business. This is a commercial enterprise, this is, this is not, this is not residential, recreational, this is a commercial business, where regardless of technology, it could be in the future, it's still something that you're putting up to generate power that you're gonna sell, I don't have a problem with that, but would you, would somebody have that next to your house, if you, if, if he lived out there, in an area where you didn't have an HOA roof, you see what I mean?
One thing, the other side of it too, is that, I mean, it could be just through, uh, it's a self-approach, right? So if you don't set a minimum, and we know that in order to actually make any money on this, or any sustainable uh, uh, cash flow on this, you need at least fifteen, twenty acres, or whatever it is, in order for it to be A, worthwhile to the person, to the property owner, and B, for the, uh, for.
Duke Power.
Whoever, to come in, um, well, I mean, it could be, it could be you, whoever. It needs to be X amount of acres. So, I mean, if we don't put in a minimum, then we're, I mean, we're kinda leaving the backside open a little bit, because, um, yeah, anybody could do it, but it's, are we really opening, are we really exposing ourselves to that much risk, because, I mean, you're not gonna just gonna go in there and throw up a bunch of stuff, and then, oh, I'm making enough money, so I'm just gonna.
No, if you talked about fifteen acres at three hundred, we'll use this figure for three hundred fifty dollars an acre that they will get annually for letting Duke Power, because that's the only one I know that's doing this, renting them. You're talking five thousand dollars a year, you know, and, and that's just not a lot of money, when you're talking about.
Not considering that money you have to put in or.
And, and, so I, I don't, I think it's, I don't, I don't think we should do a minimum, because I think it's gonna be, it, because of, of, it'll, it'll, it'll rule itself, and I'm saying, I mean, you're gonna have to have X number of, of acres in order to make it cost-effective.
Right.
So if we have a minimum, it's just, we're kinda shooting ourselves in the foot, because I may wanna go ahead and take, and turn my five acres into a solar panel farm for myself.
That'll be league, that's, 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 that's not pertaining to.
No, he's talking about the cars.
But commercial, how do you, how do you?
Wait, one second, I just wanna clarify.
Well, or not, the, the same, you don't, just, you don't make any change, you're not dividing up, it's commercial, or residence, or whatever. You never, you know, designated any kind of specific for different types, and she's right. Currently, your ordinance reads for class twos and threes, there is no minimum. There's no minimum area on any of those, if, you know. Duke could have a substation, or Duke, or, or public service, North Carolina Gas, being on natural gas, there's no minimum in this ordinance now.
But this is unique, I think solar, that's, that's what's different, like I said, it's thirty-five acre Walmart.
If you're marketing, if you're driving this for the market, I agree, don't have a minimum. Don't have a maximum either.
I just wanna bring this up too, um, you know, if it's a hundred-foot setbacks, right, if I'm standing here, it's a hundred foot that way, a hundred foot that way, a hundred foot this way, a hundred foot that way. I'm standing on one acre, just right where I'm standing already. So the bare minimum, just to put a pole in the ground, is one acre, which is something to think about, right? So, then it goes up from there, right? So if you wanna plant one acre of, um, solar facilities, you'd need at least two acres, because you haven't, you already have one, probably less than that, you probably need more than that, start doing the math.
All right.
So it's just something to think about, we're talking about minimums, nobody in HOA is gonna be able to do it.
Don't wanna be allowed to do it in HOA.
Well, I'm just giving an example, right? You know, unless you at least have one acre of land that you're not doing anything with, you could, you could put one pole in the middle of this ordinance.
All right, so no maximum, no minimum, no minimum, okay? You still have to have the setbacks, right?
Yeah.
The setbacks still, still, the setbacks, but before somebody else goes changing, the setbacks still have to be this, because this is, this is different, in the sense that it is going to have that security fence, it is going to be there, and it's not going to be something that it will ever blend in, okay?
Not gonna blend in, right?
But I, I just think it's, it's self, um, I can't think of the word.
Self-correcting, self-calling.
Yeah, because it's, nobody's gonna do this for the seventy, thirty acres. Self, what, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I know we're not differentiating between commercial and residential. A commercial, among the other limiting factors, you need to be near a power line and a, or a substation. Newtown Road has that, okay? But, only know that, so that limits you, that's further limiting the potential for large-scale commercial, period.
Right, but this is something I did wanna bring up, that Stephen, his client, brought up, that I thought was very, very insightful. A, we know they're gonna have battery storage eventually, because if I'm putting this much money into it, I wanna have the energy stored at night, so I can give it to my customers when there's a high of demand. So we know there's gonna be some sort of battery storage, or some sort of energy storage building on the property, but I hope that will take care of it with the hundred-foot setback of structure, right? The other thing I was very interested in was, it may not be in our purview, but since we do have an issue here with stormwater, and it's gonna be a non-permitable, this is gonna take up land, what is the, putting in there that, well, won't the screening, to put that in some sort of clover, you know? I, I like the idea of the deep pond.
Real quick, just wanna make sure we stay on each topic eventually, we're on the minimum makers now.
Okay, I, no, no minimum.
No minimum?
No minimum.
No minimum, good there?
Yeah.
All right, make sure you're passing, you got that, Shelley? No minimum, all right, next one. You're saying how about vegetation and stormwater?
Stormwater goes with the vegetation. That, since you're gonna have this open area, and you're gonna have that thing, there's nothing, nothing saying that you should not have clover, or the bee tolerant, or whatever, whatever. The, the option that we should keep open in this drift is some place for the energy to be stored, right? He said, please keep in mind, keep a little box of battery storage.
Yeah, so how do we do that?
What, if you just, like, you just took one away, and you just add one. And then the other part is the ground cover. We, we have an ordinance already in our thing for screening, right? And just like in certain areas in North Carolina, you were told that you had to plant Bermuda grass, you couldn't have fustic grass, right?
Erosion control.
For erosion control. So all I'm asking is for a simple erosion control in these solar areas, right? So I'm, I'm not asking, I'm not asking the, the development plant for Bermuda grass, or whatever, or whatever, but some sort of ground cover, so what is inexpensive, clover, right?
Well, you, you know, if you disturb more than an acre, and disturbing means you remove ground cover, you've got to have a solid erosion control.
Right.
And you have to keep it covered, so they may go in there and mess it up a little bit, but they have to put, so you don't have soil erosion problem, and then, of course, you have your, and some of these big ones do have tension ponds.
Okay, where do we call that out? Is, is that, is that already applicable?
Uh-huh, that's already in your.
Okay.
For class fives?
No, for everything.
For everything.
Well, you won't have any stormwater ponds, because you're not changing in purview soon?
I wouldn't think so, unless you're up next to a creek or something like that, but they, some of them do have stormwater ponds, at least maybe for the construction part, but that may be the ones that have done, uh, you know, where they, you know, harvested the wood, and then they clean it off, and then they, you know, before, they put everything in, and then they put the ground cover up, so in that construction phase, some of them are having these BNP's.
So we call it a bonnie letter, right?
A what?
A bonnie letter.
A bonnie letter, yes, it's a bonnie letter, a bonnie review. So it would probably be part of the review process, we would say, you know, you, you know, you're gonna disturb more than an acre, that's a state law, then, and disturbing means you remove the ground cover for an acre.
And that includes, uh, private landowners?
Roads in, or.
And that includes private landowners as well? When you decide, I just wanna, I just wanna be clear, when you say disturbed?
Disturbed means you move, remove the ground cover, remove grass.
So, so a farmer removing more than one acre?
Uh, farms, if they're bona fides, or, so, let's go get into bona fide farm.
Well, the reason I'm saying this, you know, going from farming to, you know, potential farming, so someone who's.
Yes, but, so, it's no longer a farm, it's no longer a farm, he just said that they lose that, they lose that present value use.
In the next fiscal year.
They move it, so when it's, it's no longer in crops, then they go in there and remove the ground cover, they're going to have to, you know, come onto the state. they're going to have to, you know, come onto the state, soil erosion control.
Okay, so that's covered.
That's covered, that's state law.
If they have livestock on it, like sheep, or whatever, that can, they, they can keep their agricultural status, I think.
Well, I don't know, those, those live farms are just, you know.
In the solar
Yeah, I don't get to, but I might get a sheep out of my house, though.
In the, in the solar template that he sent, they sent us, it talks about soil, soil conservation and, and water purification, and they, they said that, um, that they, the panels must be positioned to allow water to run off their surfaces. The soil with adequate vegetative cover must be maintained under and around the panels. The area around the panels must be adequate to ensure proper vegetation growth under and between the panels. So, I mean, they, it's addressed on page sixteen of this template, at least, I mean, we could include those things in, in there. I mean, those are criteria that could, you know, be included in a
But why do we have to end if it's already?
I don't know, and you, you know, you never know what's gonna be presented if it is, uh, you know, been used for agriculture, but what if it's just been pointed at soybeans, it's not grazing pastures? I mean, they're gonna have a lot of ground cover that's removed. You know, it depends on what it is, and it's, it is very site-specific. I, I don't know if he's, you know, if he's gonna see them, you know, as individual. They are, they are treated individually, I mean, I don't think you can get by without treating them. Just like Stephen said, it's, don't make them any more difficult than what you would for anybody else.
Correct.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, in some ways, they're better than subdivisions.
Yes.
Did you get rid of that?
So, okay, mine says about four C?
Did we eliminate that? With the word reasonableness?
Yeah, I don't like reasonable either, but that's what's in the ordinance currently. Storage, uh, shall be located on probably so as to mitigate any visual basis, but that's still a little incompetent, but it's better than reasonable.
I gotta tell you, I'm okay with it, honestly, because it gives you, you know, when someone brings a CUP up here for it.
Yeah, it gives you something to judge it by.
It does, if they're putting right next to elementary school, and you're like, why don't you put it over here? You know, by the, the tree stump.
So, so you got, you got
You wanna put the reasonable in there?
Yeah, 'cause I think it's fine, 'cause it does give us, you know, if someone's pointing at this page, you know, it's not in here, and say, I can't put it there, I wanna put it there, because it's cheaper. You're like, wait a second, that's not reasonable to, to, you know, funny properties, because you have a preschool right there.
Okay.
It, I mean, it gives, it gives us a leg to stand on when we argue their layout, I think.
Shepard, do you like that?
Well, the only structures are the panels and the
Transformers.
Transformers.
And eventually the battery storage.
The battery storage, and I, going back, that definition would probably need to add battery storage in those, in the definitions.
The C?
No, I'm back up, which, back in the definitions, the ones about, I don't even want it to. Just in the thing where it talks about associated substations, transmission, and, you know, we need to put in battery storage.
Yes, I think that's, I think, yes, I see what you're talking about. And number two at the end, and just add battery storage.
Yep.
Or energy storage, whatever, what it's called.
No, I think we should, well, you can say energy and, energy and/or battery.
Yep.
Specifically call out the battery storage.
Perfect. All right, the last thing we talked a lot about, I don't know if we got clarity on this, was decommission. What do we do? We don't have anything in here whatsoever, correct me if I'm wrong, about decommission.
Alright, I was thinking about this, Mr. Morgan. I don't know too many people, let's just say, you're gonna have an LLC. Now, we said there's no minimum, and you could build these anywhere you want in our village, okay? So you don't need minimum linkage, you just need the setbacks, okay? So he said decommissioning, so a private person, can they have it on their own property? Sure.
You can do that now, I had someone, oh, today, but
Right, you can do that now. So now, so now you, now you want to have this, you want Title V, the law, for essential funds? Seven years, do you go back and, and place a bond on it for seven years? Do you, do you, do you, do you then have it re-deeded, or? Re-deeded? Can I ask you something, and this is for you, Target, right over here, right? Target the business.
Yeah.
Do they have to come every seven years or five years and get re-deeded? No, it's a store, right?
Well, I'm not sure they even own the farm.
Yeah, it's a chain, it's a great chain.
I'm not even sure that they own it, or they're destroyed, so I don't know.
But what I'm trying to say, when he said, don't treat it any different than anything else, who goes and redeeds their business at the, at the commissioner's office? The commissioner's deeds, you see what I mean?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right.
Who, us?
Yeah, but here's the thing, okay? That Target and, uh, you know, these other places, Hobby Lobby, Dunkin' Donuts, whatever, they are franchises, okay, they're leasing the property, right? The only, the only place that owns, that actually owns the land is Family Dollar. They're the only, uh, chain store that owns the land. The other ones leasing, okay? So, so that's a little different, because at any time, at any time, accident can come along and say, deed it, and they can, you know, put in something else. These are a lot different, because these, I mean, you know, fine, money's there and, and right now, and, and you can still make decent money. However, that's not always gonna be the case. And so when a lot of these things start to go south, or the money that's coming in, uh, you know, the, uh, the market gets flooded, goes, you know, and the, the attractiveness of these go down, people are just gonna say, oh, I'm not gonna do this.
Okay, so what's, so it is, I set up this ABC Power Company, solar company, LLC, right?
Right.
And I lease the land from Mrs. Susie here, right? I go belly up, I'm done.
Alright.
Is not still the landowner responsible for that? Because they still
Yeah, and that's who we would go after.
That's who I would, you see what I mean? Okay, do I want, we, do we have two ways to do this now?
Wait, who goes after what?
That's the thing.
If we do code enforcement, somebody calls in, says, well, it's overgrown, and you got junk and whatever, we're gonna contact property owner.
And that, and that's what I was trying to ask him today about code enforcement. What can we do, what can we regulate, what can we enforce after the zones are done? He goes, nothing.
The owner of the, whoever is
Well, if it gets overgrown, or if it becomes a nuisance, you've got, you've got provisions in your code
Well, that's one of the things, I don't think we talked about yet, right? One of the things was, uh, the, um, well, updated with the, uh, the register Ds to keep to be in touch with who the person is. The other thing was, uh, the bond based on, uh, the recycle value of the
So, first of all, why does, why does fifty acres become overgrown? It becomes a little woods, I guess.
Yeah.
Go back, go back to woods.
Well, with those things, I mean, it would go back to being woods, right? The trees, I mean, wouldn't the trees gotta get stunted, or grow around the days?
So, see, to me, to me, to me, we do have something similar to this already. Excuse me, Sheldon, Sharon? Don't we have something similar to this already with subdivisions with, uh, um, their water treatment facility, uh, bonds? Yeah, they're, they're, don't they have a bond that they have to, uh, submit for maintenance, right?
You can't do bonds for maintenance, you can't do bonds.
Right.
It's usually infrastructure.
Where to build the
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
To build the infrastructure. And we have some trouble right now with some developments, trying to pin down the bonds that seem to have expired.
Right, so, that's what I'm wondering, is it like a bond, make this bond? Is it possible to have a decommission bond?
No, you, you heard what Steve said, you start putting bonds on these things, you're not gonna have anybody doing this, they can't afford it.
No, he, well, what he said, in part, yes.
A thirty-year
What he was saying was that they want either fifty or a hundred percent of that value upfront now. That's what he said, no, I'm not doing that. But what he was saying was that what's reasonable was, you get, and it would also, you get more of a gauge on the involvement and the, uh, the acuity of the, uh, of the party, is have them get a bond based on the recycle value of, uh, of the
The difference.
Equipment, and that kind of thing, plus ten percent.
Recycling value, you should, you should know that.
They should know that.
But that would be the value.
I mean, it is all commodity, it's commodities-based, so it's gonna be whatever the current market price is, but
But you would know that already, because you're paying tax on the personal property, which is the solar panel, the transformer, and the battery will just sell, okay? So you know there's a tax that the state's already assessing to them, based on the personal property that's sitting on that piece of property.
Correct.
There's a tax, so could you, alright. The decommission part, I, I see a reason for it, but going down and re, reapplying every seventy is, is bizarre.
I agree. And well, it's more just to bear, to keep, to keep on top of who the person is, right?
Got you, but somebody's still paying a property tax, and that's the property owner, because I'm leasing it, okay?
True, Eric?
What he said, what I thought I heard was, we play it back on page one time, is that it's based upon what would, it's almost like, or, kinda go back to what he was saying about somebody currently have many municipalities that are building more commercial. They actually have something built in with a bond that they have to offer up, so that if the, if the, goes empty within three years, five years, or whatever, they've got money to raise the, to raise the building.
You can do that with big boxes, yeah, prices to big boxes.
So what he was talking about is the cost to remove the equipment minus, you know, to clear the land totally, minus the recycling value, that would be plus the ten percent, would be the val, would be the bond value. Not the value of the property.
Right.
No, no, I'm not talking about the property, the property, the equipment on the property.
But it's not the value, it's, it's the, it's the cost of removing it. What would be the cost to remove it, less the recycle value, because cost to remove it's actually cost. Then you've got a benefit coming back of the recycle value for the stuff that you just removed. You're not even got a difference there. That difference is where you should be bonding plus ten percent, or twenty percent, or whatever, whatever you wanna talk about.
How do you feel about this? How do you think we should address decommission?
You, you, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know where the technology will be five years, ten years back to the point Michael's making, is a good point. That we don't know, or I think Vince you made it as well, but what's gonna happen? Is it gonna get cost prohibitive? My feeling is that unless they can figure out how to make electricity differently, it's not gonna wait for a while. And I'm talking about not my life, well, I'm gonna write it to sixty-three, or whatever, not my kids' lifetime, not like that. So fifty years, I just don't see it changing that quickly. And I could be totally wrong, but
I agree with that, because there's still a lot of people, it's still, okay, so it is catching on, but the rate at which it's catching on, uh, in the mass market is not as, you know, fast, right? So that's why, I mean, and I say, you know, thirty, forty, thirty, forty, between thirty and fifty years. And like
Are, are we even
Well, we're seeing textiles coming in, we're seeing tobacco coming in.
Yeah, but how long are the
I'm just saying. Well, what, two hundred years. We just saw a mass solar farms went here.
I mean, like, whoa, Pittsburgh, I mean, it's, I mean, that was over a long
Word number two is a contract.
Right, the other part, the reason why, not to go into history lessons, but The other reason why textiles went down was because they came from the northeast down, because it was cheaper down here, and then when it got to be, they could figure out they could do it cheaper somewhere else, and so they upwarded everything and left. So
Which can be very similar to what happened to
That's what I'm saying, and so, you know, because, well, not only that, but because there's so many
Yeah, unless they can bat, bat
Textiles, they learn to be cheaper overseas. They ain't gonna buy electricity overseas.
Right. I'm just saying, I'm already seeing
If they do, it's gonna be for them.
This historical, we can have the same conversation.
Would you put a bond up?
No.
I would.
You would not?
I would put a bond up. But I want the bond to be, I want the decommissioning bond, I do want the decommissioning bond. Because there is a reason why there was a slide that said, decommissioning bond, okay? They just, they just didn't come up with that one, okay? They said EMFs are, are okay, and everything, it's the health thing. So there's a reason why there's a decommissioning bond, because they see there's an issue there, down the road.
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate.
Okay.
Thirty years from now, somebody else takes over the land, whatever, and goes, you know what? I don't wanna have to deal with it, you already got a decommissioned bond, you handle it.
Well, see, he's got an excellent point, right?
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
You're actually, okay, so you're leasing it from him, what happens if he dies? Sorry. And his kids take over, and they're like, dude, I don't wanna deal with that. You sell the land, and, or, you know, and he's like, well, I don't wanna deal with this, I don't want solar farms on my property, I wanna get back to nature, and I wanna raise sheep, and I want them, that's where I'm gonna go.
The majority, the majority, there's already, well, trust me, there is a long-term contract written that's, that's not beneficial, for the most part, for the landowner, I see, for the, for the, the person getting the energy. But what is the sense? Hear me out. The, the Great Recession did happen, okay? From, there is a walk-in demand now, and then it dies, and then it comes back. You, you, you want, how many strip walls do fall and lay empty and fall off?
Right.
That's okay, right? Because that's in a commercial area.
Right.
These can be built anywhere in our village.
Yeah, yeah.
So it could be built by the school
So you're saying it'll become park marked.
Right, they could be built by the school or the park and go to bust. Are you, now the land, now the landowner leave, passes away, whatever, now, now the property's in estate for years, probate estate for years. Now you just got pipes and block things that can cover the ground, and a fence to put around it.
Right.
No one, we're not gonna come, the village is not gonna come and take it away, neither is the state, because it's not a true housing, you understand? So I do believe there should be some sort of bond, hear me out, for the, to start the construction and completion for this project for a certain period of time. Whatever it may be, you see what I mean? In case it does go south.
Well, the, the landowner, the landowner owns the land, but it doesn't own the solar facility, it's not his.
Correct, and he could take it apart, and he can't go on the property, because that's part of the contract.
On the, the, uh, template, solar, so on this template that we were sent by these folks, there's no mention of decommission on it, but it is very specific, it's very detailed. It has a whole bunch of things that is gonna be required, and what, what is to be redone, how the land is to be treated. There's nothing on there about a bond, on the state template.
Well, you know, okay, well, he did specifically say that, and, and he, I mean, it was
You made a point.
He did specifically say that, so, um, I personally am in favor of a bond of some sort. Um, I think, like you said, I actually think it should be reasonable, and I was saying the recycling value plus ten percent, but, um, you know, the cost to remove the equipment, minus the recycle value, plus between, you know, ten and twenty percent. I think that's reasonable. The reason why the other ones weren't working was because, I mean, we could set the percentage, whatever we want, but, um, the reason why the other ones didn't work was because they wanted such an astronomical cost upfront that they didn't have the, you know, they didn't have the money to do it, or they just were unwilling to do it.
Maybe, maybe suggestion, what if we have something in our ordinance? And Sheldon, let's see, see if you think this makes sense. If it's inoperable for a certain amount of time, right? Say, say six months. If it's inoperable for up to six months, all equipment relating to this CUP must be removed.
Ah, yeah, it needs to be longer than that.
Well, I'm saying, whatever the time limit is, if it's inoperable for a certain time period, all the equipment needs to be removed. Now, here's the thing, what, what I'm suggesting that is, the town, hey, listen, you know, you're, thirty years from now, your, your solar farm hasn't been working for two years, we know that, we talked to Duke, it's not working. Your CUP says you have to remove, it's not my CUP, and I'm wrong, oh, fine then. Now we have a, you know, we have a CP that was filed for that deed to property, which is why it should continue for deeds.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and then we're allowed to go then, find them, right? Put a lien on their property to take the property over, right? And these are gonna be large tracts of property, that's where we could, you know, the village has, has something to stand on that.
Okay.
And say, your CUP says you have to do it.
No, no.
If we would've done that with the Target, if we'd done that with this actual property, we wouldn't have that problem.
But here's the thing, you've already, you've already given them the permit to build, and it's already built.
Yep.
And now it goes to fault, for whatever reason. You think the village is going to take that person to court with their own money to have that removed?
So it's the same, it's the same as if it was a house that's been condemned.
Okay, but the village doesn't go into an HOA and ask them to condemn the house? It's got, there's gotta be certain criteria, but I, I agree with you in this, we, trust me, nobody condemns houses at the village level. What is, what is, what is wrong with putting a bond? It, it is just a financial responsibility for them, and the bond can either have, hear me out, I'm all for the business part of this.
Dude, we're on the same page, we don't want a bond.
But what, can you have a, can you have a bond for ten years? Can you make it for ten years, the bond?
Seriously, if I got, if I, if I got twenty acres, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna go to Duke, and say, I wanna put a solar facility on my property, and they're like, fine, it's half a million dollars of equipment we're gonna install, which is reasonable, right? Half a million, maybe a million dollars of equipment we're gonna install.
Okay, I got with you.
And it's, okay, great, why couldn't it, Weston Chapel, or be across the border, in Union County, I don't need a bond there. But here, now what's the bond for? But here, now what's the bond for a million dollars of equipment? There is a delta that we talked about, but still, there's a large upfront cost to put that in. So now, now that we also need to tell Duke, which is gonna tell the landowner, it's gonna cost this much to decommission and remove everything, I'll hold that in, maybe a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, how, how about you don't put the bond up? You just have it written in the ordinance and say, once it goes, once it's no longer, decommission has to be, has to be paid at the cost of the owner. How's that then?
I think that's what I was saying, it has to be removed.
No, but, but I think, what I said, the owner, the, the owner of the lease, the, the owner of the, the hard property, the real property that's getting taxed on it.
I think something like that makes more sense, yeah.
Not a lawyer, but, if you don't wanna go away from the landowner, okay? The leasing then is the one responsible for the, the real property, or the personal property that's being taxed.
Yeah, the, the owner of the facility is what they call it.
Yes.
Is responsible for the decommissioning.
Right.
So, I mean, they, that's, that's...
So then, then you, then you just, how about that word? In our, in our, in our ordinance, the, the, what is it called again?
Facility, owner of the, the facility.
Is responsible for the decommissioning of the solar generating plant, whatever you call it. How's that?
But what's your leverage?
What?
What's your leverage?
I know, that's what I was trying to figure out.
We do have a decommissioning bond for the last cell town that we, but I have a twenty, you know?
It's fifty-five thousand.
How much is decommissioned for the cell town?
Fifty-five thousand.
That's fair.
And who put that up, the landowner, or the seller?
It was part of the CUP. The, the sale company had to put it up.
Alright, well, we keep going back.
That's, that's, that's fair, how, what percentage was that based on, Cheryl?
It's based on their estimated cost to take it down, take it...
How about we leave it up to that?
Well, just remember, that's what he said not to do.
What do you mean?
He said, "Don't put up the, the total cost of decommission right up front."
That's what that other guy did.
The wholeness up, the wholeness up is, is the, is the image of what not to do.
Yeah, that was, that was what that other town did. Yeah, because they want, oh, they wanted like, the, the price to decommission it plus fifty percent upfront.
Do you wanna be that guy?
And they still vote this is a cell town.
Oh, so...
It's a one town.
That's only fifty-five grand worth specifically.
Do we need to make a motion to vote on whether or not to require a bond, or?
No, all this is draft, I guess. They ended up making a motion on the entire draft.
Okay.
What would be the minimum bond that could you put up?
There's no way to figure that out, and the reason why is because it's gonna be based on the cost to decommission. I mean, just, well, first of all, tonight, we're never gonna figure it out. Second of all, because it's gonna be based on the cost to decommission it, it's gonna be cost on, uh, based on the, basically the, the market price of the stuff that goes into it, plus...
Alright, so we're looking at something thirty years ahead of time.
Yeah.
What, we're looking at something thirty years ahead of time. Okay, that's a little too far reaching in the future, alright, let's go that way. What would guarantee that the, the project would be done?
Would be what?
The project would be done, okay? So Duke will let you, the big power company will let you connect it to the power grid. But you're still an investor, developer, to build this product, right? Who's to say that you make a deal with the landowner, and then your company goes bad? And then it sits down? You see what I mean? That's what I think we're trying, I, I think we all have the same taste in the matter, is that we're looking at that there that hasn't been finished in ten years.
Right.
Honestly, right, a decade.
Yeah.
Do we really want a solar project to go on for a decade?
No.
Building it, I mean, start, stop, start, stop.
Right.
They don't do that.
I don't have a... I, no, they don't do that.
I don't have a...
In our ordinances, we are allowed to require a schedule. We did not do that, and that was...
Okay.
We, we, the villagers failed.
What, which?
Alright, you're allowed to ask for a schedule, or...
Oh, yeah, for, which part?
We never asked for that.
Well, it's also, you're right, they have something in there that discusses, all it says is, you should remove it, and you should put it back for once.
No, it's very detailed, it tells you exactly what you're supposed to do with decommissioning.
So here's my, here's my question to you.
Uh-huh.
Like, like Cheryl, where are the, specifically tell me, is it saying that they're about the leverage that we have to make them do that?
No.
What, let, I mean...
He did say to have a recorder.
Yeah, it has to be filed with the register of deeds.
What else?
That doesn't...
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
What he wrote is to verify who the owner is, we need to go after somebody.
You know, you know, you know who the owner's gonna be, because that's the people paying the tax. You really think the landowner revenue is not, is not gonna go within a tax dollar?
Landowner's not gonna be paying the tax.
It says, it says, the owner of the facility will provide the town or the village and, and the register of deeds, an updated and signed decommissioning plan within thirty days of change in the facility owner. In other words, if they change, or they sell it to somebody, they still have to have a decommissioning plan.
So does that mean like, I own my property, and I lease it to you, Dev, to put the facility, to, to make a, you know, solar generating facility. A year later, you sell it to Vince, right?
Because he had his decommission.
So I have to have a decommissioning plan in place and deliver to the register of deeds to have it on file within thirty days of my purchase.
And Vince says, "I'm not doing it."
But, I mean, it's, it's the same...
Then you can't, then you can't have it. Then you can't get...
But it's still there, it's already made, it's done, it's up, a year later.
Yeah, who's gonna stop, he has my report.
A year later, she sells it to you, and you're like, "Yeah, I'm not telling anybody, it's, I just bought it for a million bucks, it's mine." You know, well, forget it, I'm walking away.
What is the same that we have with the clear cutting of the land? I mean, we, what power do we have as a town anyway? We have the same power with this as with, with anybody else.
What we have is an ordinance, I think, that's what we're trying to drive, is, do we put that in ordinance now? So what, so what you're saying there is, they're saying, say who it is. And that's it. And my question is that if we want to have any leverage for a decommission thirty years from now, I don't think we have a solution for that. Maybe that's just trying to get into council with us, we don't have a solution right now. Or how do you leverage decommission?
No one's gonna look into decommissioning, so, I, I do, I do like the plot is, once they start this solar project, link project, they have to have a scheduled completion.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We're in agreement with that.
Yeah, that's something that, that, we'll do on a CUP. CUP comes by, it's like, "Where's your scheduled completion?"
No, we do, it is a suggestion, submit a written maintenance plan and a process plan to decommission and remove the panels.
Are you looking at the...
There you go.
I'm looking at what's proposed, you know, in the text ordinance, I don't know what the panel...
I like that.
Let's put that, let's put that for now.
It's already in, it's already in, right, okay.
Let's put that for now on the fact that we don't have leverage for...
Well, I think within, I mean, within the next couple of weeks, or at least by next meeting, we can work on getting, determining where to get leverage. But I think it's absolutely imperative that we do put some kind of teeth under this.
Yep, okay.
If possible.
So would you please include that text in the draft that we send to council?
Which one?
The one you just said.
It's already, it's already in there, it's, it's, I am, uh...
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, can we, alright, so, going back on four, with a delete B, C, or I, what about D, about noise level?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm good with removing that, because there is no noise levels, and this probably applies to, this probably applies to...
It is, it's for...
Motors or stuff.
Whatever, yeah.
Okay.
So we take that one out.
Nothing wrong with D.
Delete D.
Take the, D is access, you know, you want to be able to get to it, you need to. Uh, documented safety and disaster mitigation training, I don't know if that's really necessary.
Let's, yeah.
That's really on now, isn't it?
Yeah, that's just part of what you have in your ordinance, yeah, leave it there.
Yeah, we need to leave it there.
You wanna leave it there?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Existing vegetation should remain in required setbacks to the greatest extent possible on all properties.
Yes.
You don't like that, that goes along with what you mentioned for. Submit a description of the route to be utilized for transmission and distribution system to connect to the facilities.
Yes.
Now, that's not even put in there, but my Rockwell experience, that was a big deal, with how much disruption they were gonna have running everything.
I have a question about this. Is this what delineates this class five from somebody that wants to put up a row property for themselves? Or puts it up in their HOA for their HOA? Is this what delineates that from that type of a structure?
No, if they have ground mounted, if they have ground mounted panels, it's gonna come on, release this.
Alright, so if I own my property, wanna put up half an acre of ground mounted panels to run my barn? Is that, now, now I gotta put a fence around that, and I gotta go through all this?
But the definition says with associated substation. Substation, transmission and just...
Well, you have, you have to convert, you have to convert electricity to usable energy.
But substation is usually indicates a fairly good size of facility.
But you're running, you're building a solar farm and your property oriented to a barn, so you would need a substation.
Yeah.
That's what you're...
No, alright.
So that would be the D and R, or nobody sees it? That's what I'm saying, is convert would be to not be considered a substation.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're converting it from DC, direct power into, you're going from DC to AC, depending on the line. So if, when he said three-phase line, that's a DC line that's running, that's the big one.
And if you're just running it for your own use, and you're not particularly, that's the other thing, they sell it on the grid.
I get it.
So you're saying, but you're saying it would be this class five? If I wanted to put up half an acre...
I don't know, this is what is always come, because we never put any kind of sign, sign restrictions or anything on this, that if you had this kind, as long as they're roof mounted, we don't say, you know, we don't say anything. I have more to that.
So maybe we should specify on here that this, part of the definition, I'm just gonna suggest this, this applies to attaching to the electric grid as an essential service to the grid.
It does say that.
It does say that.
But here's my question about this, and this is in terms of...
You have two issues when you...
Having everything with the, the fences and the, and the whole thing, okay? So, let's say that I got, I live, I have, you know, uh, forty acres, and I wanna do something similar, but it's not a barn, it's a stable where I do toys, whatever, um...
First of all, you wouldn't need to run, you know, a house, you don't, you don't need that many panels. I mean, you know, it doesn't take that much.
Alright, well, I mean, you know, I had equipment inside there and whatever else, just hypothetically. Um, would I still need to have the fence and the whole nine, even if it's on my property? And it's like, you know, forty acres between me and whoever, but I, I still don't have to have a, a fence around it.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, I did one a month or so ago in Rockwell, and it was a private, you've heard me talk about it, it was only three hundred and eighty-seven square feet, and it was like twenty-four panels.
Wow.
The size of, you know, flat screen TVs. And he, he wasn't planning to put, and I went out there and looked, it did not have a fence on it. So there must be some scale of which they end up having to have fences around it. He didn't have one, but his is a private.
Well, that's one of the things Steve said he's gonna look into to find out what's the minimum.
Yeah, I saw, I, I went out and looked at it, because he's, you know, I issued a permit, so I went out there and looked at it, and it did not have a fence on, and it's sitting, you know, kinda back where, like, where your detention pond is. It's not right up next to the house, and it's off to the side, but it's, it's not, it doesn't even have any fenced area like between, you know, like it's a pasture, it's sitting out in there.
Is the solar power going to his house, or is it going to the grid?
It's going, you, you really, I asked him that, because I thought the guy was gonna have batteries and the... No, it's going to the grid, through his house. He's, he's putting the energy back on his electric line.
Oh, right, yeah, so after, I've seen those systems, what's a pretty good system?
Yeah, my sister has one, and it, it, you know, there's no, the meter looks about the same, it doesn't look any different. It just goes to the meter.
It goes clockwise or counterclockwise?
Yeah.
It's for his personal use.
It's for his personal use, so it's not a commercial structure.
Right, that's residential.
Yeah, it's kind of a residential one. His is residential, but it is ground mounted.
So...
So where, how did, I wanna, where does this apply to that?
That's...
Where is the delineation, I think?
There isn't, except unless you're putting it on your roof.
So that guy now, if we pass this, that guy's gonna have to have a hundred-foot setbacks with an eight-foot-high fence with, with...
No, he doesn't have that, right?
I always love that he has to have a fence, we don't have anything in here about fences.
And he's seen requires a fence.
Yeah, but that's for a certain...
Yes, but there seems to be some cutoff about where it is.
That's what the man was saying, and Steve was saying is that we're talking about one megawatt, and then one, and then half a megawatt. So if you just said that this pertained to a station generating at least half a megawatt, then you would be able to do that, you would, these rules would not apply to the residential or the small person. This, this, these rules would only apply to a solar, he said, you can, you can limit it by size of land, minimum land, or by energy production. So if you said, we all know there's no money in anything... So if you said that anything that produces greater than half a megawatt, these rules then would kick in.
I like that.
Then, then you're okay.
I wanna make sure that someone that comes in here and wants to put in half a megawatt, goes to...
And it has ground mounted stuff, does not have...
To do that.
The only thing I made that man do was, uh, he had, he had eight acres, so he didn't have any problems with the setbacks, because he already had eight acres. So, but, I, I wrote it up so that he did have, he had some setbacks, but he was fine, you know, he had plenty of acreage to do it. But it was three hundred and eighty-seven square feet.
There, there's, there's two kinds of things we're talking, I think, we're talking about different things. The, the, the guy he, she's talking about is putting his solar panels out and he's feeding his own house. And whatever's left goes into the grid, okay? What they've got on Newtown, Rocky River, and in Marshville, all that goes into the grid. It's commercial, it doesn't go into my home, and I think that's the difference. If you're pushing it and you're doing a solar farm, it could be eight acres, but it only goes to you, and it's not, it's not the farmer helping me sending it. I think that's the difference.
So to, to, to make this as essential services, to, to, to make it different is for commercial purposes? Because that word's not in here?
Well, he's got definitions in that, does he have definitions in the, that ordinance? Maybe we ought to stick with those, whatever they say. He talks about residential, he talked about commercial, and then he talked about industrial, uh, utility scale.
Utility scale, so is that the word we wanna use, utility scale?
Well, we need to find out if he, what definitions he has in that model ordinance for this thing.
I was...
We would, we would send this to council tonight, though.
No, we would send it to council, so either the word be utility, utility, utility scale, then we do only three types, residential, commercial, right? No, it was residential rooftop.
It's residential.
No, that's residential.
It was residential, commercial, and utility scale.
So we're talking about utility scale?
I'm not sure he, you know, if he was really, he was primarily, even the commercial, he was talking about rooftop stuff. And that's what I wrote down in my notes.
Okay, so, so...
Commercial, building roofs, and residential, and then you had utility scales.
Right.
But I have seen one residential that was round mounted.
So for a definition, if we're looking for this to apply for a definition, it's easy. Anything that produces greater than...
Yeah, I think that...
One half megawatt, that's a perfect number.
Oh, one half?
Which would take three acres.
Point five, five hundred watts. No.
What's half a megawatt? What's, no, what's half a megawatt? That's a lot of power.
Five hundred kilo, five hundred watt.
Five hundred kilowatts is a lot of power. So if you say anything that, any, any, any of these solar power generating facilities that generates more than half a megawatt?
Five, put this, put five hundred kilowatts, and then parentheses, add a point five, yeah, eight megawatts, yeah, so that's where there's no, uh, you know, misunderstanding, I want to, so.
That's perfect.
Prevent them from doing what we're just doing.
Engineer, does that make sense?
I think it does.
You think?
Well, we want to give it to council, and they're gonna argue back the number of the size of it.
So it's, it's facilities, applies to facilities that, what did you say, five hundred watts?
But they meant a book of five hundred kilowatts.
Five hundred kilowatts, or.
Five hundred kilowatts.
Or half a point.
Producing greater than five hundred kilowatts, parentheses slash whatever, point five.
Megawatts.
It's easier to assume residential.
I think he, he kept saying megawatts.
He did.
So it's anything less than, greater than.
Greater than.
Half a megawatt.
Half a megawatt.
Yeah, but we're just, we're just saying, we're just putting that in there to make it more specific, so it's five hundred, uh, kilowatts, half, uh, a half a megawatt.
And anything over that.
It's the same thing.
Anything over that's not gonna come out.
Correct, no.
I think that's better.
So three acres of land would come under that?
Yeah.
It could, takes, it, one megawatt, it takes about three acres of land, so.
A half.
A half a, no, yeah, a half a megawatt takes about three acres of land, so that's what you're saying, so.
Could you have one acre for that, and then two acres for the stuff?
Yeah, but, but the individual, you're, you're, you're getting awfully close to hitting at somebody that's getting all that, to go back to, I mean, three acres isn't a lot of land.
No, you, you have to generate a lot of power, half a megawatt's a lot of power, a lot of power, and I'm gonna tell you right now.
Your commercial.
Five hundred kilowatts, you're not running from your, from your little solar panel in your house. You're not running to back through your house, by the way, you don't have power through your house, your wires are flying.
Yeah, you're running, you're running through subdivision.
Yeah.
Just look, just look at yourself.
I have a handful of houses that do that, and that, that would produce, you're gonna have to have some, some kind of little substation or ramp for it or something, so.
Because the transformer that sits in front of your house is seventy-five kilovolts.
To earth layers.
So, can I, can I ask, can I ask a question?
I have another one for them, I have.
The mayor. You know, is it essential, and, I mean, is this, is the council dedicated to trying to get this approved and get all this done before January?
In December, correct, which means we have to have a draft for, to call for public hearing, we have our November twelfth meeting, which will call for the public hearing to be in December, or whatever the date is, our second Monday of the month, and then we will yay or nay at that point.
Alright.
Deborah, do you think?
No, we can bring anything, too, any, anything.
I, I, I really.
You don't like being under the light?
No, I don't.
Hit the door.
And it's not you doing it, I know that. But I mean, I, I.
I hate it.
Well, I would just.
But Deborah, what the county did and what other people did, what, what, a lot of research that you did, bringing these people here, to come up with, with a draft, that for a village this size that works, that we're not penalizing someone, and that we're encouraging people to do this project, this renewable energy project, which at the same time is not infringing on other people that are here, that are property owners of the residential community, which is why most people go out here, you see what I mean? We have to present something that's workable, but we can live with at the same time, right?
I get, I get what you're saying, but it's just, it's just like the senior community.
Okay, different stories.
You try to do the stuff, you make mistakes, and, and, and then you pay for it, and I think, I think this is another example.
But here's the thing, I don't think we're really gonna, I don't think we're gonna pay for this one, if you want to use a senior hazard, a high-density hazard as a project, because this is very low impact to our community overall, right? It's not, it's not affecting really our roads all that much, our schools, and importantly, not really bothering our stormwater, because we're not making more permanent services here, so at the bit of pill, this is the lighter version of it.
We should be getting something done. To me, if someone's gonna develop their soybean, this is, I, I, I think that this makes the most sense, sorry, the soybean field, if they're developing, to me, this is probably the best thing in the village than anything else they can come up with. Unless they might still have some livestock running around, like a sheep or whatever, so we know.
John, John, do you have any view?
Okay, could I add one more thing to, before I, I submit a written maintenance plan and a process plan to decommission and remove panels, stands, wiring, holes, and frames from the property, property must be restored to pre-installation conditions, I think we should add within twelve months.
Can you read, oh, oh, number I?
Yeah.
Yep, so.
Within twelve months, within twelve months of non-operation?
Well, I mean, if they're, once they decide to decommission, if they're, see, they have to submit this plan and a process to decommission, and that decommissioning, once started, has to be completed within twelve months.
I like the idea.
Thanks, you got me.
Yeah, twelve months, do you get that, Shelley?
Yeah, and I also need to add batteries in there, since that seems to be the best I could, alright, from the property, property must be restored to pre-installation conditions within twelve months from.
Well, from when it starts the decommission process.
But complete, complete, you say.
Complete.
Yeah, we need to restore to the pre-installation conditions within twelve months.
And basically, that's gonna be in the plan, right? When they get a plan, this is how we're doing it, we're stating that in that plan, it must show how you're gonna do it within twelve months.
Right, right.
Not just, not get to us, sometime in the next, you know, decade.
So we, we put, we put, we put, we get our good diligence, we put a part in there for the decommissioning of the property.
Right.
With no.
Right, if you guys ask us what leverage do we have, what can stop somebody from doing that, I think our answer's gonna be, we haven't had enough time to, to really research to find out the best solution for that.
How big you deal right now, thirty isn't, I'll come back on referee.
He was gonna go back and take a look, he said they're gonna come up with language, too, so we can amend, we can amend this when we add the proper language.
Well, that's the other thing, if you adopt it, you can always go back.
Exactly, this is not written, it's stumped.
Unless someone files a CFP gets approved, unless someone files.
Yeah.
Unless someone speaks in here, it's stumped, we've been through that now.
Unless somebody does it, they fail. I mean, you're, you're talking very, very small risk of, you know, as compared with anything else.
Right, unless somebody speaks in here within, you know, the time that we're doing this, then we're not gonna have a problem, but if they do, if they wanna do this, about four, we're able to create that amendment, to give us levers, give us levers, then.
James, before we do that.
It is what it is.
That's what we're gonna make a motion on.
They don't?
Okay, we've worked on this for a long time, we have a draft, Shelley, are you, do you feel confident on all the amendments that were made?
It's a lot, I, you know, if I had my druthers, I would rather kind of work on it, bring it back, since we're having the gun, we may just have to, you'll have to do it the best you can, but it's whatever you're comfortable with, and then it has to be turned over to them.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, how about this, how about you make the changes, and then you send it to John, and John can verify them, and then.
Just proof it.
Just proof it, and then say, yeah, that's right, or whatever, and then send it on them.
Well, that's, is that the motion we're gonna make?
But I mean, she's worried about, she, you know.
If everything came about.
She's worried about getting everything.
So actually, what.
Well, Tommy is very tired here, because Shelley will be back on Thursday, and then she needs to have it to council by next.
Yeah, I gotta have this by Tuesday, so I don't have much time.
What I'm saying is, if we make a motion to send this to council with our approval based on the amendments, and my approval by Tuesday, then that would be the motion. One other thing before we do that?
I don't know, you wanna put that in, in a motion that you're gonna do that handle, I don't know, it's awfully tight.
It is, the other thing is, this is not consistent land use plan, this is a new ordinance, correct?
Well, you don't have anything in the ordinance, you're, what you're really doing is try, is you modernize and update your ordinance to make, to make it, to be continually relevant.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it is, you're just doing it to make it continually relevant, and I think your ordinance talks about maintaining open space and agricultural uses, I mean.
All I'm trying to say is, do we need to state consistency with this motion?
You know how you're supposed to, but.
Okay.
I believe you've been doing that.
Is it consistent?
But this is just a draft, I'm just trying.
Well, that's the trouble, it isn't.
I mean, no, this is it.
Oh, this is it?
This is our motion to send it to council.
I've always had land use.
Which means we need to have a statement of consistency.
Consistency responses as well.
So you're saying this is consistent with our, with our plan, with our.
Oh, yeah.
Or an, or, no, it is.
It is, you're modernizing and, and keeping your ordinance relevant, but in your ordinance, in your land use, you talk about maintaining open spaces and, and.
So it is consistent?
It's not inconsistent.
It's not inconsistent with, because, you know, your ordinance has.
Land use is broad, land use plan is very broad.
I just wanna make sure it's more corporately in the motion, that, alright, we have to state this, we have to state this, so I think we're fine stating it's consistent.
Okay, I think so.
So, uh, it should be available this week, next week or month. But yes, I will be as available as I can, Shelley.
Why should I make a motion?
One of you guys, you make a motion, go ahead.
No, I, I.
I mean, I think the motion is that we prove this.
Yes.
Prove, prove the draft is written with our amendments, to be approved by the chair, right? Yeah, send to council, they state their consistency.
Is that correct, Miss B? Is that it, Joe, is that correct?
Yeah, I just put motion to send to council with the amendments, based on the chair's review, and a statement of consistency. There you go.
He said that.
That's my motion.
Drop a second?
There you go.
Alright, on favor?
And Shelley.
That was some work. Alright, drop a motion to, uh, post whatever else on our agenda until next month.
Motion table, we're getting agenda.
Say it.
On favor?
Aye.
Mayor, do you have something?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
You, you got it in the meeting?
No. There is, I said, didn't end the meeting yet. It's very short, this is Shelley's last, uh, meeting with us.
Oh.
From the meeting, uh, we've been blessed to have in focus for the last, I guess it's five or six years, I think, between, uh.
Bill.
Bill, Tim, and now Shelley, uh, we.
And Susan.
And Shelley and Susan, right, to, and, and, is it the guy, did it Bill or John, or?
That guy.
No, the code enforcer.
Oh, Bill, you can't, well, you have John.
Anyway, uh, so we were fortunate enough, after we've done two rounds of interviews for, for a full-time planning and zoning administrator like we had years ago, um, and, we had six people turn the job, no, five people turned the job down for various reasons, uh, some of which the council will be investigating, but we did have a late applicant, uh, last week, we had Shelley, Cheryl, Cheryl and I interviewed, uh, a person on Monday, uh, we were both very impressed, the council had a special meeting last Thursday, uh, we voted to offer, this person the position, and she accepted on Friday, so she will be starting with us, uh.
Why not?
Over twenty-seven. So Shelley will be here to the November sixteenth, uh, or, probably not, you know, sixteenth, uh, with a little time off in between, I think, uh, but, you know, there'll still be a little bit of overlap.
October sixteenth.
November sixteenth.
November sixteenth, sorry, uh, the new person's name is Dr. Robin Byrne, Byrne, no.
Byer.
Byer, thank you, I knew I was gonna screw up the last name, Dr. Robin Byer, she is, she has a planning doctorate, actually, um, and she has done some, she lives in Matthews, so she's not far away, uh, she has some time, I didn't bring the packet with me, so it's a quarter memory, which dates at eleven o'clock at night, but, um, she has spent some time in Middle Springs, she spent some time in, who am I missing? What other?
Marvin.
Marvin?
Not Middle Springs, Marvin. All X and M. I know, totally, um, and.
Have you got a camera?
And actually, she's worked, she's actually worked for two, um, in focus, being one of them, and, and another one.
Benchmark.
Benchmark, uh, so, which is consulting services that provide planning and zoning, so, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, that was the main, it, I'm done.
I'm happy, huh, thank you.
Thank you.
A long record, you too.
No, and I wanted to thank you, and I, I understand the, the rest on this, uh, this is the second one I've gone through, and it wasn't any better than the first one, uh, I'll be quite honest with you, so, a little less back and forth with the, the legislative authorities, but I do appreciate, you know, the due diligence, I appreciate them bringing these gentlemen in, I think they were extremely informative, uh, for me as well, to be honest, uh, you know, I've done some research, but it's nothing like here for the guys that are right at the front of this kind of thing, and, uh, I know, and I, and I was looking, and I'll be quite honest, I was looking to see if there'd be any, you know, potential bias, I didn't really detect the bias, I thought it was very straightforward, maybe just a tad, but I think it was very straightforward, and you kind of gave your pros and cons. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Have you heard anything from anybody else, public, other, anything about, or sort of, or?
I heard, uh, one or two comment, one or two comments from neighbors, uh, they had some concern, what it means, and things like that, we talked about setbacks, we talked about, uh, screening, so, I mean, I think we're taking those into account fairly, uh, you have to allow, all this always starts from a, a prospect of, you, of property rights, so, you, you know, it's, it's this juggling act, and, and what we're trying to do is, and I use this term all the time, is Wesley Chapelizer, so, and I think you guys did a great job, so, uh, you know, uh, got a good question, got a good discussion, got